I'd like to call to order the meeting of Monday, September the 11th. If the clerk would please read the roll.
Councilmember Archibald.
Here.
Councilmember Ashford.
Present.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Councilmember Warden.
Here.
Mayor Rep.
Here. You have the minutes from the regular meeting of August the 14th before you. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Archibald. Is there any additions, deletions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes will stand as submitted. We do have two public hearings tonight. If the clerk would please read the first one.
Number one is to hear comments on code case number 16-3 located at 3106 Viness Street to determine whether it constitutes a nuisance as defined by city code. Following the hearing, council will consider approving the immediate demolition of the structure for listed violations.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address public hearing number one on the code case of 11 or 3106 Viness? And perhaps Mr. Haynes could come up first and give us a little background on this?
Good evening, mayor and council. 3106 Viness is a property that we are requesting immediate demolition. This particular property has been vacant since March of 2016 and has consistently had code violations both in the inside and outside of the property. The owner has vacated the property. It is now under foreclosure with the bank. And given its current state and it becoming an attractive nuisance where the police are called repeatedly to come in and secure the building after it is being opened and access is gained. So we're requesting that we take down this building as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on public hearing number one? Seeing no one, I'll declare public hearing number one closed and ask for a motion to approve the immediate demolition.
So moved.
Councilmember Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Protem Ashford, is there any discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Warden.
I just listened into Mr. Haynes. You said that the bank owns it and is foreclosing on it? Where in the process is that? And have we communicated with the bank about this potential demolition?
Yes. That is part of the process is notifying all lien holders and those who have interest in the property to let them know the condition of the property to make any improvements and changes. We have not heard anything from the lender at this point. And as with many properties, they end up going into disrepair and almost an orphaned property within the bank.
Yeah. So where are you at? Is it in the redemption period or is it going to foreclosure? Where are you at on that? Do you know?
It's in their redemption period, but the property owner has no interest in redeeming the property. And unless the bank steps forward to actually takes control of the property, secure it, and make the necessary repairs, we're requesting that we move forward and remove the property.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Warden.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
Public hearing number two.
Is to hear comments on code case number 16-6 located at 1023 Miller Street to determine whether it constitutes a nuisance as defined by city code. Following the hearing, council will consider approving the immediate demolition of the structure for listed violations.
We'll open it up, but first we'll put the public hearing up. But Mr. Haynes would please give us a background on this one.
This property, 1023 Miller Street, it has suffered two fires, the most recent being in January of 2016. Since that time, that house has been vacant. We've made repeated attempts to contact the owner and from what we understand, that person has left the country. So we do not anticipate that they will be returning to make any of the improvements on the property. Again, this is in the same situation. There is a lien holder, Huntington Bank. We have reached out to them as well to make improvements on the property. That has not happened. And so we're again requesting that we're able to move forward as this will become an attractive nuisance in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on public hearing number two? And we have a gentleman coming forward.
My name is Craig Matthews, Port Huron, Michigan. I'm here today to support the planning department in removing this home from Miller Street. As he stated, this home has suffered two fires and each time has remained in disrepair for a very long time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council on public hearing number two? Seeing no one, I will declare public hearing number two closed and ask for a motion to approve the immediate demolition.
So moved. Support.
Councilmember Archibald and Mayor Protem Ashford, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Warden.
Yeah, it prompted my another question. If the bank is going to be foreclosing on it and we're footing the bill for demoing it, is there some, are we going to have a lien for, does it jump ahead of the bank if they foreclose on it to recoup our funds? Or are we doing the bank's work?
In the past, it will be a lien on the property. In the past, we have also worked with lenders. When they've come forward, we had a property at the south end of town in which the lender did come to the table and removed the property. The concern is these properties, even if they revert back to the bank, the bank is not willing to come in and make these improvements and changes into the house. To them, this is a lost asset. And quite frankly, we would probably be seeing this for the next several years in this condition.
Okay, yeah. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, it's Mayor Protem Ashford.
Yes, just out of curiosity, I know you said they had two fires. How did those fires start? Did we?
The first fire was on the second floor.
We're not sure how that originated.
It appears on the second floor or the second fire, just based on, and I actually went through this property, it appears that it started down in the electrical box area. So it looks like they're doing some electrical work.
Oh, okay.
And it appears right around the fire box or around the circuit breaker box, you can tell that's where most of the intense flames occurred.
This shows the unsafe nature of, you know, when you're leaving something like that standing. Because it wasn't occupied, was it?
It was not occupied.
Yes. More important, why we should take action. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
Just a comment. You know, the 1000 block on Miller Street is right on that curve right now. And if we don't take care of the bad places like this, I'm just afraid we're going to lose the rest of the block and stuff because it's, you know, it's sad that we have that curve there. But it's, this is one of the reasons we have to get rid of it. So that we don't get the other people to find it acceptable to not keep their properties up. So I'll be voting yes.
Anyone else?
I just have one more question.
Yes, Councilmember Warden.
Who ends up owning the property after we demolish it and it's still going through foreclosure?
That will revert to the bank.
And do we have any experience and history with what they do with it after that?
We try to reach out to the lender. And typically on real estate owned, there's attorney groups that represent them. And that was the case in the property in the south side. We worked through the attorney. And unfortunately, the group that we really have been, had a great conversation with, unfortunately, is not at the table for this property. But that's typically what will happen. As it reverts, the bank will hold the note and probably take possession of the property.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if any potential, you know, legal recourse back at us when we do this type of thing.
Madam Mayor, David, will we be special assessing the property for the cost of demolition?
We will.
So that when we special assess the property, the bank will be required to pay our demolition costs in its next tax bill as we maintain first position. Historically, in this situation, the banks do not pay that tax bill. And then we foreclose on the property, take it back, and then we own it. So we will special assess. The banks will not pay it. They never do. In fact, there's a couple cities who are suing banks for leaving assets like this in their communities. So we will in the end get this property back and the city board here will then auction off as a side lot or attempt to sell to a neighboring property.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. We will take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Warden.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
We'll move on now to public comment time. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the city council this evening, please come forward, give us your name, and you do have four minutes.
My name is Paula Downing. I live at 11 or 1900 River Road in Marysville. When I said I'm Paula Downing, I also need to tell you that I'm a recovering alcoholic. This year in April, I celebrated 30 years of sobriety. I began my recovery in this area, and I want to tell you that the first year was really, really tough. I'm a singer and an entertainer, and I was well-known all through the area. And so coming into constant contact with all the people in my life was very difficult for me. The AA program teaches me that in order to maintain sobriety, I need to change the people, places, and things in my life that were part of my addiction. The year after I got sober, my company offered me a transfer to Pennsylvania. It was a gift from God. When I got to Pennsylvania, I didn't know anybody except the people I worked for or with. And I became involved with a recovering community there that was so wonderful and so giving and so accepting of me. And for the next nine years, I learned how to live a clean and sober, productive life. And then I came back to my hometown. I wanted to be back here because I love Port Huron and I love my people and my family are here. I wanted you to know that there is just an amazing recovery community that's being built in this area. And I know that because of the fact that I had to leave the area and come back, I think there are a lot of people that are in that same situation. What I see happening in our recovery communities today are people coming not only from our area, but from outside the area to learn how to live a productive life. We are, our job is tasked, what we are tasked to do is to provide a wonderful city, to make Port Huron the best city that we can. And that means providing housing and education and arts and entertainment and also health insurance and health benefits. And part of that health benefit is recovery. That's so needed today. We need to help the people that are trying to do that, to try to recover. A lot of those people that come into the community to recover are going to leave. Yes, granted. But a lot of them want to stay. I've talked to people just recently that tell me how much they've fallen in love with Port Huron and how they want to stay here and build their lives. Look at me. What you see is what you get. I'm a happy, healthy, productive, sober person, thanks to the recovery program that I was part of that was not in this state of Michigan. But there is a wonderful, productive community here. So what we need is your help. You need to help us. And what I'm going to do to help you is lend you my creed, and that is to say to yourself, "God grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, the courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference." Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening?
My name is James Wilmouth. I live at 1639th Street. I have been a resident of Port Huron since 1990. And I come here tonight. Is there anybody in the audience that did not get a copy?
You need to speak to us. You've got your four minutes, so you need to address us.
Well, what I want to do is if everybody has a copy, I'd like to skip everything on paper except for the last paragraph. I took and I have been having people stay at my house. And the people that I was asking to leave because they weren't paying came down and filed a complaint with the rental agency. But they weren't paying me anything, and I was asking them to leave. And now I have a court date on, at the end of this month, where I have to go and plead my case in front of a judge. Now, it was my fault for not knowing the rental law. I thought if it was owner-occupied house, then he didn't need a license. I thought that if somebody needed shelter, I could allow them in my house. I didn't realize according to the rental law that if I required anything of that person, I was bargaining with them and I would be in violation of law. And I talked to the people in the rental agent, rental department, and they told me that if a father wanted to charge his 17-year-old son $25 a week for staying there to teach him responsibility, he had to come down there and get an exclusion permit. And to me, you know, I will go to court and whatever the judge says, I will live by it. But, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I always thought that my house was my house and the one that made the rules inside my house was me. But obviously, the city of Port Huron doesn't believe in that. And I will never rent another room. I will never give shelter to anybody else, you know, as long as this law stands the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening?
Good evening. Thank you, esteemed friends and guardians of the city, Mayor Rep, Mayor Protem Ashford, City Manager Freed, city council members. My name is Sharon, and I live here in the city of Port Huron. I would like to take a short journey with you. We're going to a land of blue water and happy families. The water on the edge of this land is so inviting that people come every year to float down it. The guardians of the land are wise, and when people start to perish during this event, they send reinforcements to keep the people safe. There are children who play in and near the water and for many years do so in relative safety. One day, something changes, and on a sunny Friday afternoon, a boy drowns. The following day, we lose two more. That Sunday, another. They are all dying in an area which had been considered safe. But unfortunately, in an effort to protect the city we love, those who guarded the water had been restricted from doing so. There had been no law governing the group, so they were told to stop doing so until the laws were in place. How long would these protectors be held back? One month? Two? Four? How many children would die in the meantime while the well-meaning guardians work on laws to protect the children? I wonder. You may find comparing this story to the cease and desist order on Vision Quest to be far-fetched, but after almost 14 years of living, loving, and working with addicts and alcoholics, I believe otherwise. It is obvious that it is going to take some time to finish this ordinance on three-quarter houses. It is my hopes that perhaps that we can allow Vision Quest to again take in new people, even if it is only under a probationary period while this is being worked on. I appreciate your time and all you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening?
Good evening. My name is William Brown. I live in Port Huron. Mayor Rep, Mayor Protem Ashford, city council members, and City Manager Freed. I'm here also to ask that the cease and desist order that's been placed on Vision Quest be released, removed, whatever it has to be done. What's driving me to do this, and this is an emotional issue for me, because I don't want to impede anybody's chances for recovery from their addiction. And I believe this cease and desist order does that. We've had empty beds in Vision Quest since last May, and I believe that compassion would lead us to want to make those beds available for those people that are coming, needing facilities in order to enhance their recovery. I've heard Vision Quest referred to on occasion as a cash cow by a friend of mine because of the charges that they make to the people that are in their homes. And I think that I heard from somebody that I believe is a good source of information about Vision Quest, that the first time that Mr. Kroll had a profit was last year and it amounted to $1,500, which is not a heck of a lot of money considering the investment that he's made in this city. And I would also draw your attention to the fact, besides the fact of the rents that he draws from these people, that he makes the managers reside in those homes free. The assistant managers get a discount. Plus that he provides scholarships for the indigents. And plus, the people that usually get removed from those homes are what, I hate to use the term, completely deadbeats. And when they don't pay their rent, when they have the opportunity to do so, then they are removed. But this is all things that have affected the income from Vision Quest. Now, I also have been in recovery. You guys already know that. I've talked to you. I've had 40 years of recovery. One of my responsibilities to maintain my recovery is to work with other people that are in needing recovery, addicts and alcoholics. I personally like to share my experience, strength, and hope with newcomers. And I have been doing that at Vision Quest for a couple of years. We don't have any more newcomers at Vision Quest because of the cease and desist order. So I would like the city council and City Manager Freed to please consider rescinding this cease and desist order on Vision Quest. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the city council this evening?
Good evening, mayor, city council members, city manager, and fellow citizens. Richard Cummings of Boca, Holly Road of Boca. I'm here tonight to talk about the parking in the McMorn. Very upset. I have, over the years, spent several thousand dollars on several events, putting on events there. And I think the McMorn is making a lot of progress. In fact, I saw a schedule in the Sunday paper of a lot of, looked like good, entertained events coming up. Couple weeks ago, I was at the Policeman's Country Music Show there, and I really didn't know how to work the parking thing coming in, but there was a line of 15 or 20 people.
Wow.
And I don't mind getting there 45 minutes ahead of time, okay, to get a good seat and everything. I don't have a problem with that. When it come time to go out, I was 40 minutes getting out of the parking lot, and this upset me quite a lot. Now, you know, the recent millage was passed to help things in Port Huron. And I've been around a long time, but I can remember when we had a lot of parking meters around town, and we eliminated the parking meters that appeared to get rid of the parking meter attendant, I believe, to save money. I believe the night that I was there a couple weeks ago, that it looked like the parking lot was maybe half or maybe a third full. With the new parking situation, I sure as hell can't understand why, all the years I've been going there. When I drove in the parking lot, there was a tenant there, they took my $3. I don't have a problem with that. I don't think I'm a wealthy person. I think I'm average. But there's a lot of cheap people in this town that'll walk two or three blocks, park their car for nothing, okay, to save a buck. Well, I think the parking lot, if it's full, supports the McMorn better. In fact, when I got my tickets the other day, I heard for one of the events coming up, I don't know, it's a Motown show or whatever, whatever the name of the Americans or whatever. And I understand they're going to have an attendant, but then the parking's going up to $5. Well, I don't understand that for a second. For many, many years, it was $2 to park. They took your money when you came in the gate, then went to $3. And I don't have a problem with that. When the lot's not full now, then people's ticked off because they can't get out of the lot after the event's over, and you're waiting 35, 40 minutes to get out of there. It's ridiculous. So I would suggest you take a look at that. Put the parking attendants back on on a regular basis so that people can pay when they go in and when they leave, leave, okay? So I hope this is constructive criticism, but I mean, and those damn parking gates there don't pay no taxes or support the McMorn. And I would assume if you take $3 a person parking lot and you've got a couple hundred people parking there, the money's going to support the McMorn and sure as hell going to pay for a couple of attendants to sit there and maybe watch your cars and take the money. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the city council this evening? Seeing no one, I'll declare public. Okay, go ahead.
My name's Armin Christensen, city council member. I've been a resident here since 2014. Also, I am alumni for Vision Quest as well. I went to the Vision Quest Recovery, and I originated from Flint, Michigan. Like, I come to this city and it brought me peace and joy. You know, I've seen the recovery-based programs here. I'm a member of Families Against Narcotics. I also hold positions in many of the area churches around here. I became a productive member of society out here, and I would hate to see this program crumble or be taken away from this area because it's given me a life today, you know? I also work for Edward J. Payne. We do work in your city here. And I was at the last city council meeting, and I think we're doing well there, you know? I'm a part of that. So I did the Blue Water Terminal. So, you know, I tried to reach out to the people around here and let them know where I've been and let them know that they can do the same thing I've done, you know? Moved my mother out here. I recently moved my brother out here, and it didn't go well for him, but that's another story. And he's no longer with us. And one thing I would like to address, though, is like to see the Port Huron Police Department carry more Narcan with them and follow the procedures with that when it comes to overdoses because it wasn't addressed well with my brother. So it's been consciously eating at me. So I'd like to bring that to your guys' attention, you know? Vision Quest has given me a life that I would never dream of, and your city has too. So thank you.
Thank you. If there's no one else who wishes to speak, then I will declare public comment closed, and we will move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Ashford, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Archibald. We'll take the vote.
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Warden.
Yeah, I'd like to just hear about a couple of these things that are asterisks. Actually, the two liquor licenses changing, it looks like different ownership. I think it's one and two and G.
Okay.
And I think that's the last of it. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. We have removed those two, and we will take the vote.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Warden.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. The items on the consent agenda, one was to make permanent temporary traffic control order for Poplar Street to stop it for Lincoln Avenue. Confirmed and approved, single lot special assessments for special trash pickup in the right-of-way, and approved the reappointment of James Watson as master plumber and the appointment of Bill Johnson, licensed tradesman, to the construction board of appeals with terms to expire June 30th, 2020. And we will take then, under communications and petitions, and if the council has no objection, they're both transferring, and it's really just, we don't really have any authority over this. It's Michigan liquor control. Can we take them both together?
Yes, no problem.
Anybody have a problem with that? Okay. If the clerk would please read those both together.
Number one is to receive and file notification from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission that an application has been received to transfer 2017 SDD and SDM licensed business with Sunday sales permit and Sunday sales permit from My Five Sons Incorporated, new beer and wine tasting permit to Goodrich Quality Theaters Incorporated, 2725 Craft Road. Number two is receive and file notification from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission that an application has been received to transfer ownership of 2017 Class C and SDM licensed business with Sunday sales permit from Jack's Tavern, 2410 Connor Street, to Harder's City Limits LLC.
Do we have a motion to receive and file those?
So moved.
So moved.
Councilmember Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Lamb.
Madam Mayor, before you, you have just two simple transfer applications to new owners. There's nothing more to it.
I assume you have questions, Councilmember Warden?
Yeah, yep. Just, is new owners, My Five Sons is transferring, is it, is that from a different location that was transferred over to the Goodrich Quality Theaters? Or is that just some type of a corporation that was?
Can I, do you want me to just answer it? We don't know where this came from.
Okay.
We don't know where they get their license. Michigan Liquor Control just notifies us of the transfer. There was a time when we had some saying what happened. Now they just give us notice so that we're aware of it, and we can keep track of it along the way. But we don't really know where My Five Sons, unless it was on that document that they gave us, we don't know where it came from.
Okay. Yeah, the same thing, I was just questioning what Jack's Tavern to Harder's City Limits LLC.
And that one's just a new owner.
Is it a new owner or a different formed entity?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It could be, it could be the same owner, they just came up with another entity to put the name of the business in.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Harris.
I guess, my only question to see, being that we do the enforcement on these things here, is the fact that this new beer, new beer and wine tasting for a movie theater. And I just kinda wonder, it kinda just stands out with me that how are we gonna regulate that as far as underage drinking and stuff?
Chief Baker, sitting up.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council. I'll do the best I can to answer that. This is kinda the new trend when you see with movie theaters, they're doing more of this type of thing. We would enforce it like we do any other liquor control complaint. We do periodic inspections, any liquor control permits that we have in the city, our officers are in there at least once a month as part of checking, checking the licensing and compliance. Of course, they're in there more than that with other calls, but any sort of complaints or any issues like that, we would have, we would follow up. This type of an establishment, in my experience, we don't typically get that type of complaints. We also do, we asked a question about underage enforcement. Any liquor licenses we have in the city limits, we do at least two to maybe four times a year, depending on what type of personnel we have, where we do underage liquor stings. We use decoys that go out, and they'll attempt to purchase and see that we have compliance. We do enforce every liquor control facility in the city of Port Huron.
I guess the only thing that stood out with this, they mentioned it's a tasting, and I thought that kinda stood out, that, you know, the enforcement part of that. So I appreciate what you're gonna, that you're gonna follow up with our regular protocol.
Absolutely. We make sure. It's really important in the city. We do these regularly. You guys read about them in the newspaper. We do press releases, partly to let people know that we're out there doing this, so they're watching what they're doing and making sure they're not serving to underage people or over-serving. We watch for that while we're in there also.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? We will take the vote.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. We'll move on to from the city manager, number one.
Is accepting the single-source quote from Out3 Mobile Vision Incorporated in the amount of $38,352 for 48 body cameras with reimbursement in full through the St. Clair County Emergency Management as part of the 2015 Homeland Security Urban Area Security Initiative Law Enforcement Terrorism Prevention Activity Grant Funding Program.
So moved. Is there a motion?
So moved.
That was Councilmember Archibald, seconded by Councilmember Harris. Is there discussion?
Madam Mayor, just point out that we are using grant funds through the county collaboration that Chief Baker is a part of. This is useful. As we know with body cameras, it's become evident that it's now optional, but it's probably foreseeable in the next couple of years that these will become mandatory for our officers. Chief Baker and his colleagues have done an excellent job of securing funding so that we can obtain these at no cost. And so we appreciate Chief Baker's collaboration with his county partners. One of the things we'll have to work on with this, just our IT department is working on data storage. It'll become an issue in the future. Our patrol car cameras, so when they activate their lights and sirens, a camera comes on. That data, when they pull into the garage, is automatically uploaded. It's significant quantities of data that we must be stored. This as well will be significant quantities of data that we must be stored, so our IT department is working on solutions for data storage so that we can properly keep this evidence and so we can protect the public with it. But that is something in the future you will need to make yourself aware of.
Is there any questions?
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Warden.
I just have a question on, you know, just understanding, it's great that you're getting funding for this, but when you, just the use of it, does, are these on all the time, or does the actual officer decide when to turn it on to start recording? Just kinda wanted to get a feel for, feel for that.
Chief Baker will respond to that?
Yeah, that's a great question. Right now, we have, we're working on the policy for the body cams, implementation. This is a federal grant, this is gonna take a little bit of time to get. We won't have them till the end of the year, so we're working on the policy. There's a lot of legalities that have to be ironed out. Right now, we have a policy for in-car cameras. Anytime they have a citizen contact or have an expectation of a citizen contact, they're to turn on their in-car cameras. So this policy will mirror that, but there's a lot more to it. When you're walking into people's private homes, that's an issue you've gotta be concerned about, and that sort of thing. So then there's also, you know, when officers are out and about, you just don't know when a contact's gonna happen. So we gotta work, we gotta iron out those wrinkles in the policy, but you can expect it'll be something really similar to our in-car cameras when they have a citizen contact, that they will activate their body cameras.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because that's just something that, you know, all of a sudden, you know, people out there in the community need to know that, you know, it's Big Brother watching, but also to protect and document the engagement. So there's probably some other municipalities that have already have this around the country using this type of stuff, and do you know of that, if they're, if all the officers are already using the body cams, and they have some type of a, you have access to what their procedures or policy is and how they use it?
Are you asking about other agencies?
Yeah, just around the country. We're not the first, so.
Absolutely. I mean, I wouldn't necessarily agree with you on the Big Brother piece. I mean, this is where officers are supposed to be, this is where they're called to be. It's not like we're putting cameras up on poles. These are where officers are going to be when they're called to a situation on a traffic stop and that sort of thing. So you're gonna get a total different angle than you get in a patrol car. When a patrol car parks out in front of a house, all you may get is audio. If you're lucky, if they go inside of the house, this camera will allow you to see what the officers are seeing. To answer your question, yeah, there's policies throughout the country. Body cameras aren't necessarily new, but you're seeing more and more departments going to them, and you're seeing more and more challenges. So those are the type of things we'll learn. Reach out to our colleagues across the state of Michigan as well as across the country, because the IACP has a model policy for this, to help deal with those challenges that they've already seen in court.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor, I could point out as well, there's current legislation making its way through the House and Senate in Michigan to amend the Freedom of Information Act to address body cameras, to protect privacy. The notion that an officer could go into your house for domestic, and then your snoopy neighbor could FO you, just to have it and watch. And so there's some privacy protections that the state legislature is working on, and we anticipate those closures this fall. It's been a priority of the House.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, item two.
Is accepting the bid from Todd Wenzel Buick GMC in the amount of $26,044 for a 2017 GMC 2500 four-by-four extended cab pickup truck with six-foot box for use by the utilities division.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Ashford, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris. Is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Warden.
Yeah, I'd just like to, you know, share, if you could share a good description of this for the people out there.
Madam Mayor, there is a memo on page two attached with the full description, summary memo, need for the council that's attached.
Yeah. Do you want me to read that to everybody else, or?
What is it that you're wanting?
Oh, just so they can discuss what we're doing with this $26,000 for a replacement and how it's gonna be used.
Mr. Freed, please just make a summary of that, not, don't read the whole thing.
Yeah, I guess I'll have Lenny come on up. And is there something missing on the page two document?
No, I can read it out if you want.
He wants to read it for the public.
I'll be happy to read it.
And I said if we would just have a summation, we don't need to read the whole memo.
Quick summary, Lenny.
Okay, Madam Mayor, council, this particular vehicle is going to be used by the utility division, and the utility division needs a heavier vehicle because it's used to haul large pieces of equipment, air compressors, a Vector trailer, and on occasion, the large double-axle flatbed trailer that hauls other pieces of equipment to the site for street work, utility work in the field. This is a, one of our largest pieces of non-CDL equipment that will be used, it's in the utilities department. And also, we've got six bids for this, and our low bid at $26,000 is actually a pretty good price.
I just wanna say, you know, again, on the bid process, I appreciate having six bids come back, and again, it helped, it benefits the city, you know, the dollars, the taxpayer dollars here. And it looks like a pretty, pretty good, as far as the value here compared to the rest of the bids. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? We will take the vote.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, item three, please.
Is accepting the bid from Todd Wenzel Buick GMC in the amount of $20,086 for a 2017 GMC 1500 four-by-two standard cab pickup truck with eight-foot box for use by the streets division.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lamb. Well, perhaps, Lenny, we could just have you go right ahead and explain it.
Yes, Madam Mayor, council, this particular vehicle is used by the streets department to haul parts and things of that nature. It's not as large or heavy a vehicle, so it only has the standard cab and an eight-foot box to put parts and tools in. Now, we originally looked to bid this with a V-six, because it didn't really need that large vehicle, but we found that a V-six over a V-eight would save us $437. And so for the flexibility of having a V-eight and the ability to haul, if needed, in the winter or other things, so we decided to put in for a V-eight in this particular case.
Any questions, discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Harris.
I talked to Lenny prior to the meeting about the V-eight, and I appreciate his comment. I guess the one thing that kinda just set me a little back, and when I looked at it, was the fact that it intimidated that if we didn't vote for this, that we're gonna cost us part-time and parts and stuff for our equipment. And I don't think that--
Well, sir, what happens is, these vehicles are used, and they're used for many years. The parts on a vehicle currently has over 300,000 miles on it, and we feel it's time to replace because it's getting very, very expensive to maintain. And so we don't replace these vehicles all the time, but that vehicle is getting old enough that we feel it really should be replaced.
Thank you.
Mayor Rep.
Mayor Protem Ashford.
And this was a budgeted item?
Yes, ma'am.
So you already knew that. And I also had the same comment up here on the paper, the impact of not purchased. The way I see it, it's an opportunity, it is a budget, but it's an opportunity now because we can afford this on this line item. So I think that would be a more true grit explanation, but thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Warden.
Yeah, I just have a comment. Actually, to, actually, I do appreciate actually having these proposed, these summaries prepared for us along with this, so I do appreciate that. Gives a little more background, background on it. And again, on this one, again, the purchase price, again, looks like the competitive bidding did work to our favor, so I wanna thank you for that.
Those same summaries are available online with the packets that are put out there for the public, too, just so you know that. It's not just to us. Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, item four.
Is accepting the bid from Signature Ford in the amount of $109,380 for four 2018 Ford interceptor utility vehicles for use by the police department.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lamb.
Man, you're getting old.
I'll try to be brief.
You know, and you're reading it to us, but I can understand the public, you know, even though they have it online, as Mayor Rep said, you know, still somebody might miss something, so this is--
Actually, I'm not reading as much as I'm trying to remember the most pertinent items. Like, in this particular case, you may notice that we're buying four police interceptors.
Right.
Whereas normally, our purchase on an annual basis is three. Well, the reason we're purchasing a fourth is because in the not-too-distant past, we had a vehicle that was totaled--
Totaled.
--in an accident, and we received the insurance check for that, and we were now replacing it as part of this annual buy. In addition, you may be slightly disappointed to see only two bidders, but in fact, we went a couple of rounds with this, and everyone who's bidding on this knows they're competing against the my-deal price. And the my-deal price for this vehicle, the individual, goes over $28,000. So when we got the bid from Signature Ford at almost $1,500 below that price, or excuse me, $800 below that price, we were ecstatic to find that we're getting a very good deal for these four vehicles at a time. So, and unfortunately, we didn't have another local bidder to compare it to, but we got a very good deal for this. We're gonna get four this year instead of the three, because we need to replace an existing vehicle. And this is also a budgeted item that we've been planning for. We do this every year.
Okay. Mayor Rep, I just have another question. You know, Lenny, on that paper where it says over and under budget, the motor vehicle fund budget is $773,000, okay. Why doesn't that ever change? I mean, is there, you know, after we made all these purchases, how much is left in there?
Well, that motor vehicle fund budget is a separate line item that we maintain--
Right.
--and it changes every month, because every month, every department pays rental for the vehicles in which they are used, and that fund goes to pay for the maintenance, it goes to pay for its eventual replacement.
Right.
So when we purchase from the motor vehicle fund, it goes down, but when the month has ended, every department puts more money in, so it goes back up. So I can't tell you exactly day-to-day, but as of the time we wrote this agenda, that was the amount in the fund.
Oh, okay.
Madam Mayor, you bring up an excellent point. It's June, sorry, July, August, September. You'll receive your first quarterly report next month--
Okay.
--which we will put that fund balance on there, so it'll take into account for all the council action.
Okay.
So every quarter, we will make sure you get that.
Oh, okay. And that's a good point, because you keep saying you're drawing from this pool, and it's coming up, and we need to be looking at to see where it is and how that activity played a part on the dollars.
Several years ago, it was at zero.
Well, I know, but I'm talking about current state today. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just, Madam Mayor, just on that, the motor vehicle budget that was approved, the $773, is that gonna, is that, if you can, we'll talk about this at a different time, but is that gonna, is that gonna be including just for the new purchases that you're looking to purchase out of there, or the total activities for the budget expenditures?
I can take that question.
When you're doing, yeah, sorry, yeah.
Councilmember Warden, what we do is, the, when doing the budget process, as you can recall, all the department heads submit their capital requests for the year to that fund. So Chief Baker requested three patrol cars. We requested several of these trucks for the different utilities divisions. We take those items, we use the budget, essentially an estimated cost amount, and that's where we get the $773,000. We budget for those costs, and oftentimes throughout the year, every year we come in a couple hundred thousand dollars below what's budgeted, because through the bidding process, we come in oftentimes lower. But that number is based on the estimated costs for all the capital expenditures that were submitted throughout the various departments during the budget development process. And if you go back on your budget development sheets that we sent a digital copy out, you'll be able to see the individual capital requests there from the departments.
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback that. I do wanna say thanks again, again, for the competitive bid, even though it is two, to have it, you know, you guys work your magic here to get these under that my bid or whatever it is that everybody goes to. It's good for the city of Port Huron, so I do appreciate that.
Thank you. We will take the vote. We will take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Resolutions number one, please.
Is authorizing 12 payments.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Councilmember Archibald and Mayor Protem Ashford, is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Item two under resolutions, please.
Is authorizing submission of the consolidated annual performance evaluation report known as CAPR for the 2016 program year to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the review and approval regarding the use of CDBG and home funds.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Ashford, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lamb.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I could, I just want to take a moment to thank not only David Haynes, but also Nicole Smith in our community development office, who goes to great lengths, she does excellent comes to compliance and reporting, we've been auditing our HUD funds, and we come back with a stellar audit every year. This report here is quite lengthy, and when you go through and you read it, you can see the time and effort and diligence that Nicole and her team used to put this together, so I just want to thank David and Nicole Smith for another excellent report. And I encourage the community to go to porthereon.org and download this report if you're interested about how those funds get used, how the equity of between rich and poor, and, you know, ethnic diversity, how these funds go to support everyone in our community, and it's an accountability measure that I would encourage everyone to read.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mayor Rep. I was just wondering, even, I know this is a lengthy report, but can you highlight something here for us? I mean, what worked well for us, and what didn't work so well that you're hoping to make a difference? I know it's the same MO as before, the strategy, the same programs and everything, but did we experience any, you know, real issues that you're concerned about, you know? So, can you elaborate briefly?
Madam Counsel, some of the highlights from the report, as you can see, we impacted 28 home improvement projects, 52 properties with our lead testing. You talk about where some areas that maybe we had a little bit of a problem, and really it wasn't a problem, it was our urban pioneer program. It was so successful, we had truly exhausted our funding, and that really speaks to the real estate market is up, there's more activity and more opportunity to use those dollars. So we have seen those funds being expended, and we had to wait until just recently, until HUD has now gone through the 2017, 2018 round of funding, and we're now just able to start opening up our urban pioneer program once more.
No, David, I know what the urban pioneer, can you just tell everybody else?
Absolutely. The urban pioneer is to allow first-time home buyers who are income qualified, it will allow them to use $5,000 toward their down payment, and that's a way for them to actually gain entry into ownership, and otherwise, it may have been a difficult path.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other questions, discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Warden?
David, I just, looking through, like, page 54, I don't know if it's CAPR number page four, or you want the, and a couple of these little grids, it has, let's see, page 54, 55, it has the expected strategic plan, the actual strategic plan, and then down here, the actual program. In my understanding this, that like on page four, it has the emergency home repair, expected strategic plan had 40, is that 40 units or 40 people to help?
Forty properties, households.
Okay, and then the actual plan only did eight?
Yeah, that's the expected strategic plan, actual plan, eight, and then the expected actual for this year is four.
Okay, so we're way below what the expected plan?
Well, for expectation for this year, we're at 100%, according to the report, but this is a multi-year report, so we haven't accomplished everything.
Yeah, I just, any of these areas, I just was trying to, like, the next following page, it has the housing rehab for homeowner or residential units, and again, the target or expected was 25 and 15, and expected was 90, and then it was 30. It just, again, you're saying that this stuff is going to be carried out, and you expect...
Over multiple years, as you can see, the last two columns, you see where the expectation was seven, but our actual was 10, we're actually above the anticipated, and that was due to, again, Nicole Smith and Katie Worrell, who works with Nicole, they reached out to the Port Huron Landlord Association, made them aware of these rehab dollars, and very quickly, those monies were expended.
Once we submit this in, is there, we're already into the next year, is there any, I heard from some people, might have been a few months ago or so, that they were still waiting on dollars to come in or be released to us, is that still, can you clarify, is that...
Correct. As you know, as the federal government, we rely on their allocations, and it took a while to finally release those funds, as you know. At the federal level, there is cause for concern on the continuation of CDBG and home funds. They reallocated the funds at the same level that we had last year, however, for next year, is the stance of the federal government, is that they're looking to eliminate the CDBG and the home funds, so hopefully, that does not happen, but that's currently the discussion at this time.
Well, I really appreciate you going through that and clarifying that stuff with me. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, item three, please.
Is authorizing application of a burn jag program fiscal year 2017 grant in the amount of $18,037 for proactive criminal activity programs and acceptance of any grant funds if awarded.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Councilmember Archibald, supported by Mayor Protem Ashford, and also, I note on here that there's no match on that, so, explain it.
Yeah, this is something annually we do, this is a federal grant, there is no match on it, we attach all the funds, these funds are actually up, it's attached to our criminal statistics that we report to the federal government, and our funding for this year, the amount that's going to be awarded is actually up from prior years, which is typically around $16,000, so we're excited to have more funding. We attach all the funding to overtime for our officers to be out there and be proactive. If you can imagine, in the summer, when it's our busier months, most of our cars are running call-to-call, especially during the busier times, so it's very difficult for them to be out and be proactive, but proactive policing during those busier months is super important, so that's when we use most of these funds, we use about 90% of them during the busy summer months. We pick random days throughout the week, we do what's called a DDEX hotspot policing, which is essentially, it's a model that's used across the country, it's using traffic statistics along with criminal statistics to get hotspot policing areas that are problem areas within the city, and then we saturate that with personnel that can go out there and effectively attempt to suppress that crime and make arrests and that sort of thing. So it's really an effective, productive program, our statistics from this program, as I said, we do this each and every year, this year, we deemed it for 2017, we deemed it Operation Clean Sweep, it's been very productive, we've made a lot of arrests, good arrests, drug trafficking, that sort of thing, so it's a really good grant, like, it started at the beginning of this, there is no city match, this is funded, the federal government is a lot into our police department.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Protem Ashford.
And how many years have we been granted this? I mean, this is, we had this last year, you said it was up this year?
Yeah, I've been, prior to becoming the chief, I was a captain for six years, I wrote this grant every year.
Oh, okay.
So we've been doing it for at least six years, and I expect longer than that before I was in this role, so each and every year, this money is given out by the federal government to agencies based on their crime statistical reporting, so, and we've wrote the grant every year, and we've been successful in acquiring that money, so we're hoping to do the same for, this is each year fiscal year 2017, but it's money that'll be granted in the upcoming months, once we get the application in, receive our funding, acknowledgement letter will be used in 2018.
Right, and you do have to qualify, I mean, they just don't give it to you, you have to qualify, so it must be something that our department is doing right, so...
Yeah, certainly, I mean, there's a process, you have to go to obtain any federal government funding, if any of you are ever familiar with that, the process is quite lengthy, so, but we've got really good grant writers on staff that look for this stuff, and they work really hard to get this funding, you know, because it's important to our operation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Rep.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you. We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, item four, please.
Is approving the sale of a vacant lot at 2624 15th Avenue for $1,500.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lamb, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Warden?
This is a 40, it looks like 40 wide by 118 deep vacant lot, of course, probably not buildable, I don't know if it is buildable or not, but I'm just wondering where we come up with the value of only $1,500 for a vacant piece of property? We acquire stuff all the time, and just...
Good evening, counsel. The value on the property, as you noted, it's a narrow lot, it's smaller than our typical lots, standard buildable lot is 50 by 100. This particular site is, we were approached by the property owner to have that incorporated into their property. The 1,500 actually will be a benefit to us, because all of the city property that we own, we have to maintain and cut during the summer, and seeing the size on this property, it really is limited to its future use. I would believe, and I was going to look in the history, you know, if this was one of our properties where we had to remove a house, and now we're left with a vacant piece of property that is not orphaned, it's actually in our best interest now to combine that with the adjacent property owners.
Yeah, I just, you know, for, you know, is there, when we have these vacant lots, do we put for sale signs out there to see what kind of bids we can get from people that want to purchase them, to try to get the highest value of dollar on these things? Not just this particular, just bringing, it's bringing me, bringing this up as, in the adjacent property owners, it's going to be nice to have, I just wonder where we're coming up with $1,500 for a city-owned land, is there for sale signs, are these marketed at all, any timeframe?
The city-owned land is not marketed through a broker. We do provide this information, in particular to builders who are looking for opportunities for new construction. These type of properties, though, that, especially ones that are toward the unbuildable side, we do look toward the adjacent property owners to see if there is interest. In this particular case, we do, and really, the $1,500 is going to be the contributing value of what is excess land, because it isn't functional as a buildable site, so, you know, in my old days of being an appraiser, you get beyond the normal scope and scale of a residential property, anything beyond that is considered excess land, and really, that value is determined between the negotiations between the two parties.
So we reach out usually to the adjacent property owners with these properties?
Correct.
Okay, they don't just approach you?
Madam Mayor, as well, the Port Huron Housing Corporation, working with the planning department, we have put a lot of vacant, at the direction of the council, been marketing through our website, we have made a listing of available properties, and we try to promote that way. When I first got here three years ago, it was the direction of council I was given was to essentially unload these, all these properties. We received all the blight elimination dollars, which allowed us to demolish all these homes and clean them up, but then we were left mowing them, and we can't write one person a ticket for high grass and not write ourselves a ticket, and so we spend quite a lot of money mowing these properties, and so when you have a property that is unbuildable, and you really can't do anything with it, the only person that would have value to is a joint property value who maybe wants to buy it, put up a shed, or maybe a little garden, but it's really difficult to sell a piece of property and say, hey, I have this 40 by 100 piece of property, you can't do anything with it except mow it, would you like to buy it? Believe it or not, there's not a long line out there, so we've been very successful, David has been very successful, and so has Nicole with approaching the side lot owners, so we're able to have them mow it at not the cost of the taxpayers, but they're mowing it and pushing it themselves, but they're also paying taxes on it and increasing the value of their homes and stabilizing those neighborhoods, and so that is what we've done, we've done an excellent job of mowing a lot of property in the last year, and I believe that was something, Brian Moller, that's the first conversation I ever had with him when I got here, so...
Might as, one more, just looking ahead, not on this particular, but if these are properties that we have demoed a home on that are now there in our possession, you know, I just think that there's, to see some of these vacant lots out there that are city-owned, I'd just like to see, to try to get a higher, some type of a higher dollar amount for the city taxpayers, try to recoup some of that back, just a suggestion.
There is an opportunity, and it's a buildable site, and a good example would be the property where the builder, Steve Smith, came in and built a new home on the corner of Wright, and I believe Riverview, he purchased the house for, or the property, the vacant land for around $5,000, and we currently have had a house sold on that, he is now looking at building two more houses directly behind. So when there's opportunities to bring in a new investment, absolutely.
Thank you.
We'll look into it. Real quick, David, hitting the value of that house, the house Steve Smith built, we tore down a blighted home, we sold him this lot, he built a brand-new home, he had appraised for $163, he sold it for $159, for $153.
No, he sold it for $163.
$163, and it was like, what, a week on the market?
It was very quick, he had backup offers, I believe, five.
And he's pre-sold the other two, so it just tells you the demand to build new homes in these established neighborhoods, it's a far cry from where we were just a few short years ago.
Thank you. If there's no other discussion, we will take the vote.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, item five, please.
Mayor Rep, if it's okay with the rest of the council, number four and five, is that where women, from five and six, they're both the same?
Well, they're both, but they're from two different places, so we should probably take them separate ones, independent floor covering, the other one's Watson Brothers.
Oh, okay, I thought they should say we're both the McMorn, okay.
Number five is authorizing an additional payment to independent floor covering in the amount of $1,656 to increase the previously approved carpet purchase price to provide for an upgraded textured carpet for the McMorn Lounge lower level.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support. I got you both. All right, you choose.
Madam Mayor, this cost of the carpet was from the original $250,000 investment the council made last year, so this was a budget item.
Is there any other discussion?
Mayor Rep. I'd watch still, I'd watch still Sherry's Thunder, but anybody that had any knowledge of the carpet from McMorn Arena, is the fact that the difference in the two levels of carpet, we're talking about this little bit of difference, is so phenomenal that this value is completely, I mean, undervalued, I mean, I think it improves the value of the carpet by 50 or 60%, we're getting it for $1,500 or $1,600. It's basically, we're taking a piece of paper, but all of a sudden, then we're putting like an extra layer on it, it's just, it did magic to the carpet, so...
It's magic carpet.
It'd be nice to have, it'd be nice to have a piece of it here just to see the difference, because it's phenomenal difference for a very, very low price.
Oh, good.
Mayor Rep, I'll just add on to the end of that, that what it actually does by texture is it gives it almost like a 3D look, and so it's, it will expand the lifespan of this, extend the lifespan of the carpeting tremendously, and it allows for a little bit more of a definition, so just in looking at it, it makes it a lot more vibrant, and the coloring really pops on it, but it's really the fact that with... the coloring really pops on it, but it's really the, the fact that with the texturing it, it will hide a lot more, and it will extend the life of the carpeting.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mayor Rep, just real quick, is, when is this stuff, is this stuff, when's it going to be done?
They've installed the bulk chair of the carpet, they have a little bit finishing, but mostly it's all installed.
Okay, thank you.
Also, since you asked, the ceiling of McMoRan that you guys approved a couple of months ago was completed as well in the arena, and I would encourage you all to stop by and look at the ceiling, it makes the ice arena look brand-new.
I do have a question, though.
Yes.
Just, when is the ice going to be in?
It's in today.
Okay, good, thank you.
If there's no other discussion, we will take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, item six.
Is authorizing an additional payment to Watson Brothers Company in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars to complete the amounts owing for the repair and replacement of the plumbing faucets and lavatory valves for McMoRan.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Councilmember Archibald, Mayor Pro Tem Ashford, is there discussion?
Madam Mayor, if I could, in the June twenty-sixth council packet, your budget item was for fifty-one hundred dollars, when it should have been fifteen thousand one hundred dollars. The proper amount went before the McMoRan authority, but this was a clerical error when it came to the council, this is my fault, I apologize for this, I should have caught this in my review of the agenda, but this typo was for the difference of ninety-seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. It was for a budget item, it's part of the two hundred thousand dollars, but this was an error that I oversight, and I apologize for it.
So nothing different is being done, it's just the correction of the dollar figure?
It's just a correction of the typo, yeah.
Any discussion?
Mayor Rep, I just, I also wanted to thank Nancy for, for straightening me out on that, too, because I, when I seen it, it jumped right at me, and I said, an additional nine thousand dollars, so I went back to the McMoRan minutes and stuff and looked at that, and I said, whoa, this is, and I'm glad she straightened it out, and James is right, so.
I apologize, when the final draft goes out to you, it is my responsibility to oversee that, and I've dropped the ball on this, so apologize for it.
Accept your apology?
Nope, you're good.
What you said three times, I just don't.
Drop a number on his next paycheck.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, councilmember.
So this work, is it completed, and this, we just got the invoice?
Correct.
So all replacing, repairing and replacing all plumbing faucets and lavatory valves at McMoRan is pretty much complete?
Correct, in fact, we had, they had, the budget amount was fifteen thousand one hundred dollars, they actually came in at fourteen thousand eight sixty-five, so they came in under their bid, but it's embarrassing to say this, but we had many drinking fountains and shower heads and, and things that weren't working in McMoRan, and to be quite frank, when you have a facility that many people, we're legally obligated to provide drinking water facilities and bathroom facilities, and so part of the turnaround plan that Nancy has been deploying the last twenty-four months is making McMoRan work and making sure that things that are kind of slipped by get fixed, and that was a big part of it. So it is complete, councilmember.
Thank you.
If there's no more discussion, we'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, we'll move on to ordinances, ordinance number one.
Is being given its second reading and enactment, is an ordinance to amend chapter fifty-two zoning, article three, district regulations, division one, generally, section fifty-two dash one six-two map of the Port Huron Code of Ordinances for the purpose of rezoning the property generally described as the south one half of nineteen fifteen twenty-second street, twenty-two seventeen Bancroft Street, nineteen twenty-two twenty-third street, and the south one half, half of nineteen fourteen twenty-third street from an M-one zoning district, light industrial district, to an R-one zoning district, single and two-family residential district.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz? Discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Warden?
I just wanted to know, since the first reading, has there been any other further communication from any neighbor concerned, or any feedback? I think I asked it last, last time, too.
No, we have not heard any other, any other conversations on the property.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, item two.
Is being given its first reading and is an ordinance to amend chapter fifty-two zoning, article three, district regulations, division one, generally, section fifty-two dash one six-two map of the Port Huron Code of Ordinances for the purpose of rezoning the property generally described as sixteen oh-two Lepere Avenue and seven hundred vacant lot sixteenth street, from a C-one zoning district, general business district, to an R-one zoning district, single and two-family residential district.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashford, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Archibald? Is there discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Warden?
Just, this looks like it's the same owner, is this a recent purchase, or do they own this for a while, and now they've requested to have it rezoned?
Good evening, council, yes, that is the request of the property owner to have it rezoned from a C-one to an R-one, and also to combine the vacant lot to the rear.
So they are going to combine it into parcel?
Correct.
So just one parcel? Okay, and has there been any, I guess this is initial, we'll have to see, any notices sent out yet to anybody, or does it need that?
No, there hasn't been any opposition or voice of concern.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, item three.
Is being given its first reading and is an ordinance to amend chapter forty-two streets, sidewalks, and other public places, article two, construction and repair of sidewalks, section forty-two dash sixty, width and location of the Port Huron Code of Ordinances for the purpose of allowing an existing sidewalk less than five feet in width to be replaced with a sidewalk of similar width.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Madam Mayor, if I could give a quick explanation, this is kind of one of those things where we interface with our citizens and hear their feedback and recommend action appropriate based on the feedback. I was riding my bike about my first two months on the job, and a homeowner was replacing some sidewalk in front of his house, and it was a four-foot section of sidewalk in the entire neighborhood, and he was being forced to replace his section with five-foot, which didn't fit in with his neighbor's sidewalk, it looked silly, and he says, why do I have to do this, it's stupid, and I looked at him, and I thought, yeah, you're right, and so I had Lenny review this, and Lenny said, it doesn't make sense, if we're building new sidewalk, we will construct two five-foot sidewalks if we reconstruct an entire street, but if a homeowner wants to replace some broken sections of their sidewalk, they should be able to replace it to match the neighborhood, because it kind of looks weird if not. I actually think our policy, if left unchanged, actually incentivizes homeowners to not repair a broken sidewalk because the additional cost of having to make it five-foot wide. We're an older historic community, some of our neighborhoods have four-foot sidewalks or three and a half foot sidewalks, and, you know, I think the citizen feedback we got made sense, Lenny did his engineering review of it and said, there's no reason why a homeowner can't replace like what's there. Now, if we go through and we reconstruct the entire street, we will move it to five feet, but this is something, a reasonable request by a lot of our citizens, and we believe this is appropriate.
Is there any discussion?
Mayor Rep, just a comment.
Councilmember Harris?
I wanted to thank Lenny for having a little conversation about that same thing before the meeting, in fact, if you, if you look at the Harker Street corridor, we were at fault with the same thing there, we went, replaced everything up there with four-foot sidewalk, and we left the old sidewalk there, and then they come back, have it two years and done it, but I appreciate for him for doing his homework, because the Federal Highway Administration, the U.S. Department of Transportation, they have different standards on sidewalk, and their standards is four-foot, but then you get under the American Disabilities Act, they have different parameters, and I think his proposal on what we plan on doing is probably a good fit for the city of Port Huron, and I think generally, it's, it's going to save the residents' money and us money, too, and it's still, we're still going to be compliant with the ADA Act, so, thanks, Len.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Warden?
I just want to echo the same thing Councilmember Harris just meant, said, just to be able to finally deal with, you know, we have a lot of history in this town, and sidewalks are four feet, and trees come up, or they have to replace some things, they should be able to replace it with the same four-foot one, I think it's a smart move, and I do thank you for bringing this to our, as a change.
Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, that concludes our agenda, is there anything else to come before the council?
Mayor Rep and council, this past weekend on Saturday, Mayor was out of the country or coming back, but I did have the, the opportunity to represent us on here with the recovery community, and they were really out in full force, not just Port Huron, but I think all the, probably all the state of Michigan, probably, all the state of Michigan, and I think you were out there until about eight-thirty, because I passed there, I think ten-thirty, oh, that's when I passed at eight-thirty, I said, you're still out there, but it was just a lot going on, a lot of networking, training, Narcan training, I actually, I did take advantage of that and took the Narcan training and stuff like that, and just, just talked with a lot, a lot of people that were out there, and it was just a lot of energy out there and support, wasn't just the recovery community, it was the, the city and other supporters, so I just wanted you to know that they're doing great things, had a lot of great support, you know, from a lot of businesses and everything, so it was, it was, it was a nice event, and it's, it's going to be an annual event, too, by the way, yeah.
Well, thank you for going on my behalf, I see there was a nice article in the paper about it, too, so.
I talked about you, I said, yeah, Pauline up in Alaska. I said, yeah, and I'm over here in Knoxville, that's all right, yeah, but it was, it was